Okay, Madam Clark.
Okay. I guess I'm reading the announcement this time.
Uh huh.
Okay. The meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Roll call, please.
Yeah.
You're not even waiting tonight, right? Okay. Okay, so that's Councilmember Pataglia is here. Deputy Mayor Canestrino, here. Councilmember Greenman, here. Councilmember Sims.
Yeah.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're not approving any minutes tonight, so we'll go right to the City Manager's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Last night we had our council meeting, and we covered quite a bit of redevelopment information that's all moving forward. We have the five-year abatement offer tonight. Excuse me. Two Way Street RFQ is moving forward. We also met with 210 Main Street, the new owners of 210 Main Street for pre-application meeting, proposing three-on-13 units, parking garage, three buildings, all very positive. Actually, they're realistic what they're looking forward to doing, their experience. They are going to request the area to be considered an area in need of redevelopment, so it's something that's probably going to come before the mayor and council to evaluate to determine whether or not the city will be willing to go forward in that direction, which I would highly recommend they do because I think it's a positive project for the city. Also, we had a neighbor complain about 67 roll-ins. It was a house on the corner where there was debris in the yard, lawn was overgrown, and it was thought that the city's DPW had done the cleanup there, cleaned it all up and actually pulled everything behind the house in the corner to hide it from view. It turns out that the bank who's servicing the house, house is in foreclosure, had pulled everything behind there, and our DPW was kind enough to go over, clean everything up, and remove everything from the property. So I'd like to thank them for their efforts and hopefully clear up any misunderstandings because they did not do it. We also sent out the rest of the letters to board members who have served on our different boards in the city, saying thank you for your service, and also welcome letters to everyone else who's going to join the boards over the next several weeks with new meetings and thanking them for serving the city over the next several years as well. We also had a request from a neighbor in reference to the bus stop 385 Kaplan, where I spoke to New Jersey Transit about this, and they're going to come in to speak to us about it because they're concerned about moving the location of the stop because it's a very heavily-traveled stop. Where the house is, where it's moved to now, the homeowner's complaining that it's ruining his lawn, the noise is impacting his quality of life because it's starting earlier, and everything else. So I spoke to John from New Jersey Transit, who was actually here several weeks ago for New Jersey Transit, when we were looking at doing the transit village application, and he was nice enough to say, you know, we can look into it with the possibility, but we have to come up with a reasonable solution. So whether it's we can either maybe do sidewalk concrete in front of the neighbor's house to preserve the lawn, or to just move the stop entirely, maybe a block up or a block back. So we are exploring that. And then the last thing I want to talk about tonight is another money issue. In reviewing the budget with Chief Freeman for the fire department, we found another $108,000 that we owed in overtime that will be reimbursed. If you recall during the summer, the hospital had a pump break, and we had to supply a fire truck, keeping water pressure for emergencies and whatnot. So it was another $108,000 that we'll have coming our way, which I'll approach the hospital with this week. I found another bill as well for $64,000, $68,000 that I have to verify in overtime. Looks like that road too, as well from the state police for our fire department. So every week we're coming up with a little bit more, a little bit more, and we've also come, sent out the two SRO bills corrected, so that we could forward the payment. We were told that POs will be issued and they will be paid right away for the two months that are outstanding. And the 2013 crossing guard bill was compiled by the police director in the traffic division, and that'll be ready to submit hopefully by tomorrow. So thank you for everything, everyone, I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next order of business is Resolution 1-14, which will be the appointing of our new city clerk, Ms. Deborah Carlson. So at this time, would you please bring up your dad? Okay, please put your right hand on the Bible, raise your left hand. Repeat after me. I, your name.
I, Deborah Carlson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of.
Perform all the duties of the office of city clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen. On behalf of the council, we welcome you and we look forward to working with you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're gonna do that now. Need a motion.
Do that right now. Okay, Resolution 1-14. Dad?
Do you want me to read the whole motion, the whole resolution, or just?
Uh.
Mayor, all we need is the be it resolved.
Be it resolved. Okay, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack that Deborah Carlson be and hereby is appointed city clerk of the city of Hackensack.
Roll call, please.
First, a motion.
Oh, sorry. May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer. Second?
Okay.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay. Next resolution is number 2-14, introduction of ordinance number 1, 2014, amending news racks.
Okay, now, this is, it's an introduction of ordinance 1-2014, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to repeal and replace Chapter 176 entitled Regulation of News Racks.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 1-2014 as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 21st, 2014, at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, at this time I'd like to open this to the public. Is it first or second? No, we don't open this to the public.
No, uh-uh.
Next time.
Next time, sorry.
They're all introductions tonight.
Just introductions.
Yeah.
Resolution, Resolution 3-14, please.
This is the introduction of ordinance 2-2014, an ordinance adopting lot C redevelopment plan for the city of Hackensack.
A motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 2-2014 as introduced does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 21st, 2014, at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Okay, moving on. Resolution 4-14, please.
Introduction of ordinance 3-2014, which is an ordinance establishing short-term real property tax abatement and exemption programs.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution number 5-14, please.
The clerk has a notice to read on the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 3-2014 as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 21st, 2014, at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Okay, now Resolution 5-14.
Okay, this is a resolution authorizing the city to execute a collective bargaining agreement for the public safety communicators.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward. Resolution 6-14.
6-14 is a resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack to apply to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for transit village designation.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer. Second. Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmembers Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Moving forward. Resolution 7-14.
Resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack to execute a separation agreement. There's Stephen Lewakman.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Excuse me, Resolution 8-14.
Okay, is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to the city of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution 9-14.
Is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services again to the city of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Moving on to Resolution number 10-14.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of an advertisement for bids for the lease of certain property owned by the city of Hackensack, which is various green street properties.
May I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino. No, he called.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
All right. Listen, Resolution number 16, Resolution 11-14, Deputy Mayor Canestrino brought something to my attention. There's another bill on here which should be polled. It's for data works, I believe.
It's for Excel Communications, the second bill of the 5,373. You can get polled. That's the one that we're investigating right now? That's the one that Mr. Dib is under investigation.
There's a $1,000 for a survey, 5,000, and that's the...
That's the 5,000 for the extras. I could give you the adjusted figures if you'd like to write it down.
Yeah.
Okay, so the current fund changes to 497, 611, 31.
Okay.
And the total expenditure changed to 2,186, 542, 22.
Okay.
Say that second one again, please.
2,186, 542, 22. It's a reduction, it's a bill for 5,373. Oh, I'm sorry, 02, instead of, it's 5,373, 20, I'm sorry. So the ending cents is 02 on that one, instead of 22.
Okay.
Okay, so this is Resolution 11-14?
Correct.
Okay. Be it resolved by the city council, the city of Hackensack, that the bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid. Total expenditures now will be 2,186,542 and 2 cents. Inter-funds and transfers is 92,219 dollars and 68 cents.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Mr. Pataglia.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Ms. Carlson, did the public get a copy of this version or no? Or I'll just make them aware of it?
No. What they looked at or what's in your packet has got the old figures, so the new figure for the total expenditures is going to be 2,186,542 dollars and 2 cents. It's a reduction of what's on there.
Okay. At this time we'll go into the consent agenda.
Okay. The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certificate of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. That the consent agenda is encompassing Resolutions 12-14, 13-14, 14-14, 15-14, 16-14, 17-14, and 18-14.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay. This time I'd like to open the meeting to the public, or like to have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I'll offer.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Okay, at this time the meeting is open to the public. If you'd like to speak, please approach the microphone or the podium and give your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening, Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive. I would just like to congratulate our new city clerk and wish her the best in her new duties, and we look forward to straightening out some of the irregularities that have shown over the past. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Regina De Pasqua, Hackensack. Again, welcome, Ms. Carlson, officially, and Happy New Year, I forgot to say that last night. Actually, I was going to stay home tonight because it's too cold, but I'm kind of heated about that email I sent you. I don't know if you saw it. I have three feet of ice in front of my house. Three feet going from the curb out into the street. The whole length of my property from neighbors discharging water. No way it's melting, no way it's just a drain. I think it's a washing machine, honestly, because it wasn't there last night, it was there this morning, there's more coming out now, nothing is melting. And if you park your car in front of my house, you cannot get up my driveway. I couldn't get my garbage can. It was on the other side of the ice, and there's three feet from the curb. Fortunately, recycling was coming by, and I asked the guy to push it in for me. How is this permitted? I know people can have drains and sump pumps, whatever, but this is, what's being pumped? What's melting?
This is the first I'm hearing about.
Okay, I did send you an email with pictures, okay?
I'll take it, get it for you.
Yeah, it's a...
It could be...
We're getting, it could be...
If I may, a sump pump has nothing to do with melting. If groundwater will, you can still get, even my sump pump's going off now. You can get ground...
At the top of the hill?
Well, if they're getting groundwater and pumping the water out. Doubtful, but you never know.
At the top of the hill.
Yeah. But if it was a sump pump, it would have nothing to do with the freezing, it would just have to do with out there.
The volume is not impossible.
I saw the pictures.
It's impossible. And it's three feet from the curb. You cannot park in front of my house, you cannot get up the bottom of my driveway, my entire...
This is the second incident on this, right?
Well, the other one was on the sidewalk.
Right.
This one's in the street. This would be, if I fell while I was getting my garbage...
Can you tell where it's coming out from?
They have two drains. They have two drains in front of their house. But it's no way, it's got to be the washing machine. There's no way this is naturally happening. There's no way it's a sump pump because there's no way there's that volume.
Right.
There was more coming out when I was leaving tonight. I couldn't get a picture because it was dark, but...
Did you actually see the discharging?
Their car is parked in front, but they have two drains in front of their house. I don't know how they got the permits, because when they did the second one, they didn't have a permit for the work they were doing. So I called the building department, and I got a summons for my sidewalk, my neighbor got a summons for a sidewalk, the neighbors across the street got summons for their sidewalk, because I called the building department because they were doing work without a permit. That's how the building department would work. If you made them come out, they would give everybody in the block a summons, okay? This was a year ago, I think. And they now have two drains, and they're at the top of the hill, the discharge, and the amount of ice, it's, if I fell, I'd be suing you, okay? I'd be suing the city, because it's in the street. And it's being permitted to discharge in the street somehow, somehow. And it's only in front of my house because it freezes up right away. It doesn't go all the way down, there's a sewer, down further. It doesn't reach there because it's frozen. So how can, I don't understand how this could be happening unless it's a washing machine, unless he's melting the snow in the backyard and putting it in the drain? I don't know. But we can't park in front of our house because we can't get to our house. We have to walk two houses down to walk up a driveway.
Ladies and gentlemen, check it out for you.
Okay. I sent you pictures, AOL email, not to the city one.
Okay.
Okay? But I would have been home in my pajamas if it wasn't for... Oh, yeah, one more thing, I'm sorry. I also sent, put this in the email.
Do you have it there?
I reported it to the 311 app, and I immediately got it, got an answer back that my request was closed. Are we not using that 311 app anymore?
We will look into that.
Immediately, I got back, like right after I reported it with the pictures. Your request is closed.
Look into that also tomorrow, Anthony? Thank you.
That's unnatural. And it's only in front of my house. I'm being dumped on, literally, being dumped on, okay?
Okay.
Showing Tim.
Hi, good evening and Happy New Year again, and welcome again to Debbie, and congratulations, and welcome to Hackensack. I know you're going to do a good job, because you haven't done in the past.
Your name?
Very impressed, my name, Catherine Salvo, sorry, Hackensack, Hudson Street, no address. I was very impressed with last night's meeting. I know that this group is going to move on, move forward with the transit village and all the good things that are going to be happening. I also would like to know if there's going to be any criteria or any governing body or any group that's going to overhaul, overlook the entire project, so we have some kind of common denominator, some kind of aesthetics, so it's not eclectic like it is now. I mean, every town usually has like a theme, they have the buildings all have to be a certain height, a certain guideline to the sidewalk, certain color awnings, like, you know, Hudson Street has blue, orange, gold, I mean, it's like everything mixed up. Some kind of common denominator that would make it look, you know, symmetrically good and aesthetically good, and just if there is a committee that we could do like all the same lights, or have all the same doorways, or some kind of a uniform, when they submit the plan, who will they be an overseer to make sure?
There's a, part of the rehabilitation plans is streetscape, so this criteria that has to be followed as they go along to meet, when they adopted the plan, to give, when you go for the downtown look, so everything is uniform, certain type of lights, so it's not hodgepodge.
Well, streets, streetscaping like we did on Hudson Street usually applies to the benches and the right away and, and the lights, but I'm talking about the facades of the building. Are we gonna have a general theme?
The facade of the building, the first three stories of the buildings, any building, the first three stories of any building that goes up all have to meet the criteria of a certain type of construction, uh, high-end construction, all, uh, like-in-kind lighting. Um, the sidewalks themselves on new buildings all have to be widened to eighteen feet.
Right, that's the setbacks.
To allow for setbacks.
The setbacks, yeah, but I'm talking about, do we have a theme like the Botany Village does or?
Even, even the buildings, the higher buildings as they go up, you can't have like, if fourteen stories is allowable, for instance, you can't have fourteen stories go straight up. It has to step back and have setbacks so it doesn't...
Right.
Give a canyon look.
Yeah, yeah, that I understand, that, that's...
That's all, I will, I will get you a copy of the, the renovation plan because it's all in there.
No, no, I know about the setbacks, but all we have, do we have a theme? For example, if we're keeping the two-ten Main Street, that's the turn of the century, uh, like art deco facade of a building.
Right.
Are we gonna keep with that or are we gonna integrate like a modern building with, you know, like, say, Lestil or that's, are we gonna have certain criteria?
A lot, a lot of the design is in, actually in the rehab plan if, if it was presented to the public two, two, almost three years ago. So I'll, I'll get, I'll give you a copy of that plan and you'll see.
Okay, so there is, there is a continuity, there is a...
Yes, there's a whole...
There's a criteria that the developer has to meet when they come in that's tied to that plan.
Okay, right, so it's not gonna be hodgepodge and...
No, 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 they have to, everything has to be like-in-kind from one end of Main Street to the other.
Right, and I was very impressed with going back to two ways on Main Street, which would be really good. Um, I have a problem with trucks because they think they could tear down, you know, because it's north, when they head north, they just go. So by making it two ways, it's gonna be hard to navigate an eighteen wheeler.
It's gonna force them onto River Road.
Well, they're supposed to, nobody forces it. It says truck route, River Road, right up Main Street. Once they, once they pass my building and, and they do not make a right on River Road, they're going up Main Street.
It'll, it'll totally change the traffic, the traffic flow.
And the integrity of the road is, is bad too because of the weight of the truck.
Right.
So we need to keep those eighteen wheelers and all the other trucks off of Main Street. And I think by making it two ways, it's gonna be kinda hard to navigate it because right now...
Even for the way it's set up, the way the plan is set up, even deliveries will probably be limited to smaller vehicles. There'll be loading areas set up, um, for the loading and unloading of trucks.
How about the backs of the building? Could that be done in the background?
For some of them, if it's available, yeah, but some don't have that availability.
Okay, and the other thing that, that's, that impressed me was the little inserts for the bus stop. So if the bus were to stop like we did in front of the administration building, it has a little cutaway, so the bus stops and the, and the, and the, uh, traffic is allowed to proceed, you know, north or south without obstructing, you know, the flow of traffic. So, um, I thought that meeting last night was very productive and the transit village with the bus stop, I thought that was a very good idea. And, um, to come out tonight, to get all these people out tonight was, we, we really support you and I'm behind you with all the, the hard work that you have to have ahead of you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, may I get a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, uh, would you please announce that we need to go into closed session for a short amount of time? Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution calling for an executive meeting of the city council for the following purposes. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under section seven B seven and seven B eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee, whereas the discussion more specifically involves litigation and personnel issues, which may or may not include various disciplinary matters. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within ninety days or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality, pending litigation as of one seven, two thousand and fourteen and/or personnel.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, to go into closed session?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, um, before that, is there any, uh, comments from the council? All the public still?
Congratulations again, Debbie, you know, and thank you for you guys for coming and happy new year.
Okay?
I'll echo his sentiments. We're very happy to have you, Debbie, we're gonna keep you very busy, but hopefully it'll be a pleasant experience for you and we look forward to lots of great things, uh, in the future for Hackensack. I think we're gonna have a very exciting year. Couple of folks tonight referenced last night's meeting, uh, we talked about a lot of new and innovative ways of looking at doing redevelopment in the town and like to let everyone know that we've had, you know, lots of interest, lots of developers interested in our town and people coming and very interested in, in getting involved in Hackensack and that's wonderful news for all of us. Uh, thanks for coming out on this cold, cold night and we look forward to seeing you again at the next meeting.
Mr. Sims?
Just wanna wish everybody happy new year, wanna thank everyone for coming out, for believing as, as, and welcome, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you.
Ms. Greenman?
Thank you. Thank you. Happy new year to everyone, happy, healthy, prosperous. Uh, welcome, uh, Debbie. Are you gonna do well, I'm sure, and, uh, thank you, Anthony, for doing a great job and making more money for us. Always welcoming and finding new money for us. It's a great thing. Um, thank you, everyone, for coming, um, we appreciate your support and keep coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, exciting day today as, uh, Mr. Martino mentioned, several meetings, uh, one for the, obviously you spoke about two-ten Main Street, which is a giant project. It actually includes, uh, the existing bank building, it's two-ten, the building next door of two-fourteen and actually two-fourteen Moore Street, uh, over three hundred units, uh, you, the term iconic project came up, it is an iconic project. That is their biggest building in the city and, uh, it, it's, uh, really exciting that that's going to take place. It's all gonna be within, within the rehabilitation area and, uh, excited about that. We also went over and, uh, had a meeting today on, uh, a small project on Temple Avenue, which would add a nice, uh, would take away a commercial property and put a nice residential property there of about twenty-four apartment units, high-end, uh, very nice-looking building. So hopefully that, uh, goes through, that'll be going, uh, probably to the planning board next step. Uh, you saw it tonight, couple of resolutions, one, the transit village, that all ties into all this. Um, this is the first step in, in moving forward with the state, uh, getting this transit village designation, this is passing this resolution is part of it. Um, very important for the city of Hackensack if, if we can get this. Um, they're not given out that often and, uh, we meet all of the criteria, I feel, necessary to become a transit village and, uh, it would be a big plus, especially as far as development goes, it, it entices developers to come here. And, um, we also passed a resolution tonight about lot C. Now, lot C does another piece of property in the city that's exciting for several reasons. Number one, the city owns it and, uh, we're making some money on parking, but certainly not, uh, you know, what we will be making if this property is developed, which we're sure it will be. Uh, from what I understand, there's quite a few developers interested in this property and, uh, the more there are, the more competition there are to get it and the better it is for the city. So that whole piece of property will be going on the tax rolls, plus it will still be a parking lot. Instead of being a, an open space parking lot, there'll be a parking deck there, still enough to take care of the Bowler City and the Hockey Rink who leases spots, still take care of the public and still take care of the residents in the building that will be going up there. So that's a, a really great project for the city. And, uh, wanna wish everybody here and everybody watching a happy new year. Um, very excited about this last six months on what we've been able to accomplish. I'm very, you know, wanna thank the council and, uh, everybody and Anthony and attorneys, everybody that's been involved. There's been a lot of hard work going on, uh, to get where we're at and, uh, very excited about the future of this city. So, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.